All right, so the usual reminders, this meeting is being recorded. All votes will be taken via roll call. And in attendance from the select board is Jane Devon Smith, myself, David Phil, Joyce Chungalo, John Woskevitz, and Christian Stanley. So first item this evening is the consent agenda. We have warrants AP 2138, AP 2138 S, AP 2139 S, AP 2139. And that's it.
Phil moved.
Second. Motion by Joyce, second by Christian. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, Jennifer.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Devon Smith?
Yes.
And Woskevitz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next is public comments. We're going to limit this to 15 minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes each so that other people may speak. And if you'd like to make a public comment, please turn on your camera, wave at us, let us know that you're here. Amy?
Hi, so I did want to have one thing out for public comment. Last select board meeting, I, after the tri board, I did listen in to the rest of it. There was one item that I wanted to bring up. And the item was, it had to do with a letter that the select board was going to present as part of the town of Hadley. And my understanding is it has to do with the college. And they're looking to have, some of the employees want to have daycare. I think it started out in South Hadley. And the employees felt that there should be daycare. And yeah, that's great, and that's a wonderful benefit. I think that's a great benefit. But my comment to that is that is a employer, and that is a separate employer. That is not the town of Hadley. My feeling is that that should not be something that the town of Hadley should be involved with in any way. My fear is that, who's to say that that employer should have to do daycare where another employer shouldn't? I don't, next thing you know, that someone could come back and say, hey, since you thought that was such a good idea, why doesn't the town of Hadley become and does childcare for us? I don't want, you know, that can't, we can't have another line item for that, as far as affordability. So it's just, it's one of those things, it's a great thought, but I just don't feel that that's the place for the town to be involved with and to say that they, what another employer should do. That was my only comment, and it was just something that I saw in the last meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. Key Shore, you got something as well? You're muted. Can we unmute?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I don't know if, it's regarding the Route 9 expansion. And I know a couple of businesses are kind of having a little trouble regarding what they're getting regarding assessed value or what they're getting in return. I'm not sure if Paul is here or not from Exotic Auto, but I know he was having a lot of difficulties regarding dealing with DOT. I just wanted to bring that to the town's attention. And I'm not sure if there's any future discussion of bringing DOT in and addressing some of these issues before, you know, it turns into something else.
So we have Exotic Auto on the agenda for six, so I think he is planning on coming, or I hope he is at least.
Okay.
So can I ask a question, Key Shore? And how much property are they going to be sitting right near front window when they come through with the, with the new road?
So for us, we're not too concerned for the hotel on the street. You know, we, the last plans we had for that was for redevelopment where the building would actually, the newer building would be pushed out back. Our biggest issue is that we're going to lose our sign and we have to replace it. But I know, last I talked, which was some time ago, I know the town and the planning board was working with, on a case in case basis regarding signage and helping the businesses out with that. So we haven't received anything official from Mass DOT regarding what we're getting from them. So I'm guessing it's due to COVID, so we'll see. But I'm not too concerned about us.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, obviously we'll talk more about it, but it's funny that we're being told by them when they come to the meetings that everything's good, we've got agreements with, you know, 95% of the landowners down Route 9, but yet most of these landowners have no idea what's actually going on.
Yeah, I agree, David.
And unfortunately, a couple of meetings ago, he said, his last statement before he left the meeting was, we can always take it by eminent domain.
Yeah.
Really ticked a lot of people off with that statement. I wish the state would act a little bit more professional when they deal with all citizens in Hadley and the businesses. And long live the board.
But as we realize, no matter how much, pardon my language, bitching we do to the state and as many times as we go back to them, and they're going to do exactly what they want to do. So too bad, Hadley, and they've done that right along. This is what they're doing, and you know, they always, they haven't given us many concessions on things that they've wanted to do in regards to Route 9. So, you know, that's where my state is, and I'm always getting myself into trouble, so I'm going to keep quiet right now. So I don't know why, but I'm going to keep quiet right now.
Come on, the meeting just started, Joyce.
I'll wait until six o'clock.
Okay, so anybody else here for a public comment before we move on? Last, last chance, if you want to turn your camera on.
Yes. Hello, yeah, my name is Paul, owner of Exotic Auto Repair. Hope all you guys are doing well.
Doing well?
We are, we are, we are going under immense stress and pressure. And I don't know what other words I can use because I had Mass DOT approached me a couple of times. And, you know, they were, first they were saying, we're going to help you out. We're going to try to do this for you, do this, do that for you. And now they are saying that we want the place. If you don't get out, we're going to bulldoze your place and get you out of there. So we are, you know, we don't know which way to go, where to go, who to ask to help us. You know, to get us some fair, you know, fair conditions. I know they are doing their job and, you know, I respect the laws and regulations of the state, so I'm not going to say anything against that. But just to be fair enough to, yes, take the property, but at least be fair with me and help me out to relocate and continue my business, what I'm doing there for the last seven, eight years. Thank you.
So, Paul, where is there, where are they going to be sitting, right? And they just want to take your whole piece of property?
Yes. Well, they are, they are adding a lane in front of the, the property, and then they are taking a lane from the east side. And first, first they were like, oh, we're going to take the, the part of the parking lot and then let you, you know, decide how you can get the cars in the shop. And then all of a sudden, they came back to take the whole property. Okay, we'll help you relocate on Route 9.
All right.
Well, you know, this will start looking for properties on Route.
Your internet connection is really not great. How about, if you can hang on for just a few minutes, we can talk more about this. I just want to get public comments out of the way because we have you on the agenda. So we can spend a little bit more time on this, if that's okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you very much.
All right, great. Anybody else here for public comments? Mr. Baronowski, are you here for public comments? But it looks like that was a yes. Can we unmute, Mr. Baronowski?
Unmute. Where did he get?
Okay, well, new to this technology, right? I'm only 52. Just comment on the perimeter, the permanent of RVs along the river. We're just learning now, as the landowners are learning and the people on the campers are learning in the last day or two, that Conservation Committee and DEP want to permit under an NOI. They're considering every camper a separate activity. And we're all struggling, all the landowners, as to how parking campers on a land is considered an NOI separate activity at a cost of $165 per camper. So we're looking at, some of the landowners are looking at, you know, between, all these costs are going up to $1,500 just to put their campers on their land that they've been doing for the last 20 years.
Are you a Hadley resident or landowner in Hadley?
I am one of the people that has campers on one of the properties.
But you're not an owner or a resident?
No, but there are other people on this call that are.
So whose property do you have your camper on?
Mark Britton's.
Okay.
And he's on this call.
Okay.
We've got just the permit fees on the agenda for tonight. We'll have a further discussion on that later on this evening in some more detail. And then I'm sure this will not be the end of the discussion because it sounds like there's some big money involved in this process. So we'll certainly talk about it a little bit more, but.
Excuse me. This is Wendy DeForge. We own property in Hadley, and we're getting the same as Mark Britton and stuff. She's charging us outrageous prices and everything.
Who is this?
Wendy DeForge, Lionel DeForge's wife.
And where's your property?
It's at Three Mitch's Way.
Three what?
Mitch's Way.
Three Mitch's Way, okay, down at, down at the marina?
Yeah, it passed there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Joyce.
Yes.
This is Johnny Mitch, Mitch Kowski, sorry.
Yes, Johnny. Good, how are you?
Good, sorry, I joined the call late. But I know we're going to discuss this later in the meeting, but, you know, this is something I want to also partake in when we do discuss this, as I am a owner too, as river, riverfront property, so.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, and the last call for public comment before we move on? No? All right. Is Haley's here? Let's get the veterans' tax work off out of the way.
Hello?
Hey, Ellie.
Hi.
So tell us about the tax work off program for veterans.
Sure. I, I was informed that town meeting voted to approve a veteran property tax work off program in 2017, but that the program had not been activated. And since I oversee a program almost exactly like it for seniors, for people over 60 who are homeowners in Hadley, I just took on adapting those, those program guidelines and also heavily, just really kind of revising North Hamptons to suit Hadley people and Hadley, Hadley veterans of any age who are property owners would be eligible for this tax work off program for a $500 abatement on their taxes. And they would be working 37 hours within a calendar year until October 31st of this year, if, if the program goes into effect this year. So it's, and it would be, eligibility would be determined by Steve Connor, who's the veterans agent for North, for North Hampton. So I would like to propose that you as a select board approve permitting this program to be activated and understand that there could be up to four, four positions held by people, which would cost the town $2,000 if people really utilized it. That's the maximum outlay.
Right, so Steve is also our veteran agent. So, I mean, we certainly can work through him. I don't have a problem with that. I think, you know, it's minimal on, on what would be, I mean, that would be my take, and that's what I'm offering, is that we would get this program initiated for our veterans. I think it's great. We've offered it to our seniors in town. Let's offer it to the veterans we have also.
And so do you?
That's a motion. That's a motion.
All right, motion. Can I get a second? All right, second by Jane. All right, and then, real quick, how, what makes you eligible for this program? Is there income requirements? What's the?
There are no income requirements, and there are no age requirements. You have to have served in the armed services, and you have to have a specific kind of discharge paper. And that would be looked at by Stephen Connor, who would determine eligibility. So we don't have to be, understand that as thoroughly, although you could ask him for, for more guidelines about what makes someone eligible. But as, as far as we're concerned, the town of Hadley is concerned, a veteran of any age who owns property in Hadley could apply for this, and they would need to identify some skills and some job experience and select among the jobs that have been defined by department heads. So, and it's a very simple application that you have a copy of. There's a copy in the, in the board docs. And I, I think there's plenty of time in the year for some, for people to take advantage of this if it would be helpful to them.
This is great, absolutely.
Any further discussion on this? I was just gonna, I had a question, but then I answered it myself, reading through the documentation. So you're either eligible for this or the senior tax work off program. You can't do both.
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
It's, it's said in there that
Okay, it did.
You could do either or, you couldn't do both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, Jennifer, roll call?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Devon Smith?
Yes.
And Woskevitz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Haley, thank you for taking this on, because obviously, it's like you said, it's been since 2017, and this is the first time any action's been taken on it. So I appreciate the work on getting it off the ground.
You're welcome. Thanks for voting it.
All right. All right, well, thank you. All right. That's all set. Let's go back to Exotic Auto. And Paul, if you're there?
Sir.
All right. We had you down for six, but I'm sure you don't mind a few minutes early.
Absolutely not, sir. Thank you.
So the story we got from Mass DOT was basically, they had already come to agreements with, with most everybody on Route 9. Everybody's being compensated fairly, everybody's happy. And, you know, obviously, that's, that's not the case. So can you, I guess, tell us a little bit about, about the process? I don't want, you know, private details or anything like that, but did they just make you an offer based on your appraised value? Or what, what are they trying to give you?
Well, you know, they, they came in and they, they said that we're going to, first, first of all, we're going to help you to, you know, relocate. Because I'm the only individual on Route 9 that is being chased away, shutting down completely, and running out of business. I'm the only one. Other, other people, you know, they're taking a little bit of land here and there, but I'm the only one that, you know, has gone completely. So they said that they're going to be helping me to relocate on Route 9. Wherever possible, we can get a small piece of land or, you know, get a shop that is closed or buy a little piece of property that I can, I can move on on Route 9. Being said that, they said they were going to be, be fair, but there is no, no view of being fair because the money that they are offering me as an appraised value, with that money, I can't even buy a bond in Hadley. Forget about buying a, a piece of property to, to build a shop on it. And they basically are saying, well, this is assessed value on the property, and we're going to give you this, and that's about it. And the rest is you're on your own. If you don't get out, you know, we're going to bulldoze the property and, and, and pull you out of there. So I was kind of hurt, and of course, you know, I told them very clearly that, you know, I'm not trying to get rich by, from Mass DOT, because I'm, I'm a guy that works hard. I worked hard all my life, and I built this place up with all my savings I had. So being said that, I told them that, you know, just be fair with me, just help me where I can at least maybe buy something on Route 9 and maybe just build a small shop like I have now and continue my, my life and just do what I can. Thank you.
Was this your first offer? Have you, you've only received basically in a
That is the, that is the first and the last, and that is the whole thing. You know, they are not, they are not saying, they're saying that we're going to give you whatever the appraised value is, and I have no problem disclosing it. You know, they're saying 250, 270 for the property that they're going to, they're going to give us. But with that money, there's nothing I can buy on Route 9, there's no way. Every property on Route 9 is, is half a million dollars plus. Even a piece of land is five.
Did you, Paul, did you ask the assessors, what, what are you assessed at?
So basically, they said, we're going to assess the property only. We do not care about the business. We don't, we do not care about what kind of business you're doing, or, you know, what are you doing? We are just going to pay you for the land that we're going to take from you, and that's it, nothing else.
They have to pay you for the building also, the land and the building.
Yeah, to be, yeah, I guess they have to do that, but, you know, this is what they told me. They said that we're going to, we're going to give you the assessed value of the, the property, and the assessed value is this much, and that's about it. But I did ask them that, with that amount, what am I going to do and what can I do? And they said, well, you know, that is your problem, you know, we don't worry about that. But I said, but you are taking my livelihood from me, you are closing me down completely. I'm the only one on Route 9 that is being shut down. And as far as business, I think I'm running quite a good business with God's grace. You know, I try to do everything right, and I, I do the best I can for anybody that comes to me.
So at a public hearing that they held, it was pre-COVID, so probably a year and a half years ago.
Yeah.
They had said that the, the way that the process of takings usually works is they make an initial offer based on appraised value. And then they said that there would be some back and forth on the, on that issue. And they said that in the end, if somebody was to go to court and challenge it, that typically they were paying, I forget what it was, six or seven times appraised value by the time things were, were sorted out. So from what?
Not, I wish that was true, but not for me. I mean, for me, it is one, one shot, and that's it. They, they said, this is what you're getting, and there is no, there's no other questions to be raised. And yeah, if you want to go to the court, go ahead, and you know, you're going to be in the court for three, four, five years, and then we'll figure out what happens after that. But there is no back and forth. I mean, they are very straight up with me, and they're saying, this is what you're going to get. And we don't care about the business, we don't care about you, we don't care about anything. We want the property, and we're going to take it, one way or the other. I mean, you don't give it to us, we're going to come with a bulldozer, and we're going to bulldoze it right in front of you.
The issue is, yeah, it may take three, four, or five years in court to sort out, but in the meantime, you know, they're trying to put in a lane through your parking lot. So they're going to come to a conclusion, one way or another, sooner than three, four, or five years.
Exactly, yeah. See, my, my point to them was, with all respect, I told them very, very clearly that I just want you to just help me enough that I can move on with my life. I'm not trying to, you know, I don't want, you know, a certain amount of money that, you know, I can put in my pocket and walk away. I don't want to do that. I love my work, I love what I'm doing, and I want to continue that. I'm not that old yet, and I, hopefully, I can continue the next 20 years if I, if I'm alive, and I'm, I'm going to try to do that. But that is the only thing I, I told them that, you know, I cannot, yeah, go to the court, yeah, but, you know, who got time to go to court, and who's going to wait for four years, five years? By the time, I'll be totally destroyed, because I would now have no business, and basically, I cannot do anything. I need something, I need something to happen before the project starts, so then I can move on. I know, okay, hey, you know what, this is what I'm getting. Okay, I'm going to get this piece of land and then talk to the town of Hadley and see what I can do, and maybe build a two base shop there and continue my, my business.
So what, do you have a written final offer? Is it in writing?
Yeah, they sent me a letter in writing.
Which we have submitted to.
And we did submit that letter and all the paperwork of the town, just, just for the information.
Okay. Who did you submit it to, the assessors?
I think we gave it to Carolyn.
It's on board docs, Joyce.
Okay. I didn't see it when I looked at board docs the other day, so I, I'd have to go back and look at it.
And excuse me, David, can I just, can I just ask a question of Paul? Paul, you also informed me that you had spoken with Representative Carey. And so part of that information that you got is from the correspondences, or it's exactly what he sent Representative Carey. And I did speak with Representative Carey last week, we met, and he was scheduled to have a meeting with Mass DOT to talk about your issue. I have not heard back from him yet. Have you?
No, ma'am. I haven't heard, I just, I just got, I think, two emails from, from his aide that they are working on it, they're talking to Mass DOT. And then, of course, when I, when I saw you, you were also saying, and no, no answers yet from Mass DOT.
I will follow up with that.
I thank you very much.
With Senator Commerford as well, her staff on Friday for another matter, and I'll, I'll bring it up again at that point as well.
I thank you very much, ma'am. I thank you all the, all the support and all the help you guys are giving, giving me. And my, my concern only is, I'm a family man, and I have, I have, you know, I have to keep my family up. And what I'm doing is, I just want to continue that, and I just, I just need some help, that somebody can help me to just continue my business.
Yeah, I, I think I can say that I'm sure the entire board is behind you, and Carolyn as well, and wanting you to be able to continue operating in Hadley and making a living. I, I will say, I think that you should probably pursue this in, you know, kind of two pathways. I would start reaching out to lawyers and seeing what your options are, though. Because with, just like with us dealing with Mass DOT, like Joyce said, it's their way or the highway.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
There's no negotiation, there was nothing.
You know? That was just what I wanted to tell them. This is what we've been going through since they finished phase two of Route 9. With the water project, it's going to be between 800,000 and a million dollars in water work that needs to be done under the road that the state doesn't want to help us with at all. Never mind the sewer line, it's all part of the infrastructure that needs to be done before the road's done.
Yep.
State has no intention of helping us with the underground work at all. Although they have programs, Roads 101, 102, 103, on and on and on, where they give you funding, and you need to get the work done under the road before you resurface it. But their rules do not apply to themselves.
Right.
Key Shore had something?
Yeah, just to my knowledge, including Paul, I know of four businesses total that don't have a sign, they don't have signed agreements with Mass DOT. I know two of them haven't seen agreements with, from Mass DOT recently. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
Who, who's speaking?
It's Key Shore. It's Kishore.
Okay, thank you, Kishore. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have a sign. I mean, I could speak for ourselves. I know we don't have a signed agreement right now.
Okay.
Have they been fair with you, Kishore?
I haven't seen anything. I have to go back and look at our paperwork. Um last I really heard from them is probably sometime last year around this time. Um I I, you know, with COVID, um we kind of, I think everything took a bath, so I haven't seen anything recently.
Okay. Um Carolyn, can we, or Kishore, could you get with Carolyn and maybe provide your info and the other businesses that don't have signed agreements at this point?
Yeah.
And uh maybe we can follow up with Mass DOT and see what's happening with those? Because they're they're moving, you know, full steam here and telling us everything's great. And obviously, that's not the case.
Yeah, I'll and I'll I'll double check with, you know, on my side of my family to make sure we didn't receive anything and no one's told me, but but I I I know I've just, I just talked to two people and they don't have signed agreements right now.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Keep us informed, please.
Yeah, no problem.
Amy?
Yeah, I as far as just uh to read it, to to go on, piggyback on what you said, David. Eh, we, the bank had a lot of trouble with Mass DOT. We had, oh, we had big fight going on for a while. It wasn't until our, we had to get the bank's attorneys involved, um eh that they would even work with us a little bit. So and as far as I know, we don't have, we weren't offered anything. Yeah, I I think it's still, it's still pending. And they had told us that they weren't gonna put any structure in front of our building. So even though there's a bus stop, there'll be no structure. Uh we were told of some changes that they that they did comply with because of our bank's attorney got involved. But it was a big fight. Um so, um and I don't necessarily trust because I don't necessarily know if it's in writing, trust that they are are doing what they said they're gonna do. Um but um Paul might have to get an attorney involved because that's the only way we got through.
Okay. Um Paul, uh get in touch with me this this week at some point. I'm happy to chat more and we'll see what we can do to to help out.
Yes, sir, yeah. I thank you. And I do have, I do have my attorney also right now on on Zoom. His name is Don Allison. He's actually on Zoom right now. And he's doing his best. Uh he is there, actually, could probably talk.
I I can, I mean, I, again, this is Don Allison. I can speak to some of the particularities of Paul's case, which a lot of other people don't have. Because Paul's lot is so small, the amount that they need for the widening of Route Nine makes his whole lot unusable.
Gone.
So they are taking his lot, not, you're not arguing over the value of four feet of frontage. You're ar, you're you're dealing with the value of the lot. And they have, and and unfortunately, it shuts down the business, but I think as you know, dealing with Mass DOT is dealing with Mass DOT, they are doing a taking of the lot. They don't have to come to a signed agreement. They file a piece of paper and take your property. You have three, you don't even have, they don't have to even go to court. They just file it in the registry. You have three years to fight with them about the value of the property. But they're only looking at appraised value of the lot with the building on it. You're correct. What is that worth? Um and and Paul and I looked at whether or not their appraisal, forget the appraisal of the business, the appraisal of the building and the lot was was a fair appraisal. And we came to the conclusion that our appraiser would come up with the same value if that's all we were looking at was the lot and the building. The problem is, he is the only one on Route Nine that they are shutting his business down. That is the fundamental problem. That's what we're dealing with. They are literally shutting his business down because he can't access his building with the little bit of land that he'll have left in front of his building when they take what they need to take for Route Nine. And that's what makes his property a unique property, where you're not fighting with them over the value of a four-foot strip of land running on your front yard. You're you're dealing with a complete taking.
Right.
And we are informed he's the only one they're doing a complete taking of.
Yeah, that is correct.
It makes his situation very, very unique. And there really isn't room. I mean, y- you have three years to argue about the value, but they're not even gonna consider the value of the business. They don't even wanna hear about the value of the business. They will pay to move you, but they will not give you the value of the business that you've shut down. That's the fundamental problem.
Let's uh, we'll keep working on this and um, you know, with Senator Comerford and Representative Carey. And then we'll do what we can with Masked OT. So um, let's uh connect sometime this week and we'll follow up on this, okay, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thanks. And uh hopefully we can find a solution that's better than what they're offering you.
Thank you. I really appreciate. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll keep going on. Uh budget discussion with Finance Committee, number five point three on the agenda. Amy, uh, is there anything you wanted to cover tonight about the budget so far?
So uh, we met um last week and what we're going, we, all we did was really go over the um, make appointments. So we have five scheduled appointments uh for um April. Uh and we're meeting on four, six um to discuss pretty much with the education, uh police, fire, inspectors. Um we'll be talking to them on four twenty-two, uh no, I'm sorry, four twelve. So April twelfth, we'll be discussing with the Board of Health, Council on Aging, Veteran Services. We have a whole list, library, park and rec, all of those. Um on four twenty-one, we'll be doing all of general government. On four twenty-two, we'll be talking with Public Works and anything left such as OPEB uh debt, things like that. On four twenty-seven, our plan is to meet and have our vote, um vote any recommendations. And then on four twenty-eight, the next day, we will present to you what our recommendations are. So um, we've been given um the the, basically what it would be at level funded and level services. Um, so um, we're looking at that. I don't think it's a um a flat thing that we could say that, you know, so we're gonna be presenting you with something. Um, I I do know one of the big, big, big items are uh is employees. Um, I have to say, just on not uh on the whole finance, but just on at least my, what my vote would be, is is basically unless we could come to something more with um you, the unions, I can't see us not supporting our non-union employees somewhat in some way. I just feel like that is to give the non-union employees nothing and but yet to, but yet we all give the union employees what is in their contract. That's just not fair. So unless we could come across the board and do something flat as and negotiate with unions, at this point, I think we need to support to support our employees. So I do agree with the presentations that have been coming across in supporting employees, but um, as far as all the different line items, we want, our basic thing is, we're gonna go over them. We're gonna listen to all the uh budget and um we'll just, we wanna keep it as low as possible because, you know, we want to you know, show that we put our best effort into our taxpayers, that we could keep this as low as possible. I don't wanna see it go up like crazy. But um, you know, we have to, we still have to run the um and and support our employees. We have really good employees and we have to support them. So we'll do the best we can and we'll give you something that we feel is fair. And if for some reason um one of the departments disagrees with our recommendations, then at that point, we're gonna tell you that too. And then they would be able to present to you why they feel that it should be something different.
Amy, we never said that we would, I feel that, and I think I can speak for the whole board, that we are uh wanting to be equitable between all of our employees, uh whether they are union or non-union, and that's never been uh an issue whatsoever. So uh I I for one, and I think I can speak for the others that, you know, some of the others, that we are in agreement with that.
Yeah, that sounds good. I I I think the, where I was getting with that is the level um funded doesn't account for some of that one, you know, the cola. So that's why I'm in the middle somewhere. I wanna keep things down, but at the same time, there's no way I I would want to not do something for the employees.
After this last year we had? Absolutely. Yeah, they've all deserved something for what we've been through. Absolutely.
Amy.
Yeah.
If we're, if we look at the level funding and a two percent tax increase, then everybody would be in somewhere between one and two percent anyway.
Well, i- it that could be, John. I mean, because there are other line items such as OPEB we need to discuss and things like that, but um, there's also a a lot of increases that we have, no matter what we have to adjust, which affects it, such as um you know, heating costs are up or something such as um, oh, like retirement or or um, you know, I I I don't know. There's 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 certain costs that we can't get around.
I would say that too, just in general, the world, the country seems like it's getting more, things are getting more expensive. Prices are going up on things, so I think it's gonna be really hard to not have a tax increase or not have something just based on what things are gonna cost the town looking forward. So um, it's hard to change with the times.
Yeah, A- Amy, um, my understanding is that even if we level fund, and I'm not saying we're going to or not, but uh even if we went that direction, we would still have to have some degree of tax increase because of the fact that we subsidized it last year uh from stabilization, correct? So there's, there's pretty much no way around that.
I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
And now, like I said before, I'm not ever gonna vote for a seven percent increase like was mentioned on this call a few weeks ago, but um uh, there's, there's unfortunately gonna have to be some increase.
Hey, next thing we're gonna need is is a tax work off program for the working man at the rate we're going. We're we're exceeding our our expenditures here, you know, it it just, it's not working out. Somewhere this has to stop.
All right. Yeah, we have to remember too, John, we have the lowest taxes in Hampshire County, you know, if you look at dollars per valuation. So I mean, it's hard. I agree. I mean, I don't wanna vote for a tax increase, just like David is saying, but we have to pay for the town's functioning somehow, so it's it's challenging.
I I know, Christian, and you you could never understand this. What I'm saying is if we level fund and take care of the help with a, say, a two percent or a one and a half percent increase, you're still covering all those costs. We're not getting any thrills and frills out of it, but we're paying the bills and we're moving ahead a little bit. Depending on the revenue sources we've got coming in, depending on what comes in from the federal and the state, well, these are still all unknowns, you know?
But we still have to put money back in the money we borrowed from the town, from the stabilization fund. And and that's a serious issue and we're also gonna have to not necessarily this year, but start putting money back in OPEC.
Uh, I understand. We're on a set, we're in the second year of this pandemic, really. And there's people out of work. There's people can't afford their rent. There's people that can't afford their taxes. There's people that can't afford automobiles right now. I mean, it it's, it's getting pretty bad out there. And everybody's ignoring the facts.
Well, I have uh lots of faith in the Finance Committee. They did a great job last year with uh squeezing out every penny they possibly could. So um, you you said you'll bring our, your recommendation to us on April twenty-eighth? Is that what you was?
That's right.
Okay. All right.
Oh, so all, all in all, all of us, every one of us has to keep an open mind and see what we need to do to make it equitable for everybody, um whether it be taxes or whatever. Um and just all work together and see what we can do. We gave everybody a break last year. Uh according to Sue Golowski, uh nobody reneged on paying their taxes or anything else last year, so we're in good shape in that area. Um, let's hope that we can continue with that for this year, but always keep that in mind so that we can still work together and see what we need to do.
Okay. Well, thank you, Amy. And I know it's a ton of work, so better you than me.
Yeah, thanks, Finance Committee. Appreciate it.
Indeed. Thank you, Finance.
Um, do you want us to put you on the agenda for meetings in between now and April twenty-eighth, so you can just uh, you know, have, kind of have a standing agenda items? You can give us an update or?
That would be fine. I come to these anyways just to listen in, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, Christian, go ahead.
Uh, just while Amy is on the call, I was gonna mention this at a certain point. I didn't know when, but it seems like a good time. It's just the Capitol Committee. And just um populating that with a select board member, uh, you know, going forward for this round, typically that's something that gets read off quite, quite a bit at a town meeting, so I don't know if there's another member of the select board or if you wanna wait. Um, when there's new, a new person on the board to select somebody to be on that committee, I'm happy to uh continue to be on the committee for this year since it's a new town administrator and new person on that committee. Um, but I know Amy is on it as well, so I figured right now is a good time to kind of talk about it, see if there's any transition that wants to be made onto that Capitol Committee.
I'm okay with you staying on there if you are are willing to do it, since you kind of know what's been happening in the past. And then we can always make that change after the election if you wanna uh step off or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I can do, it's prob, I'm thinking it'll probably be two meetings before town meeting and um, that's no problem for me, just I don't know what to do at town meeting when it comes to the Capitol articles, who would present that, you know?
Um, Carolyn, is that acceptable? Do you know, to have a non, I I'm sure it is, a non-select board person uh read it, read the articles?
Oh, absolutely. Typically, it's the Finance Committee who submits, who presents the budget and Capitol Committee submits the capital. So but would however have we would like to do it.
Are you okay with doing that, Christian?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Can can we make Christian the liaison to Capitol Committee for a year beyond his term?
Wait, wait, wait. I had two meetings in my mind.
Helping with
Keeping it going.
Helping with the transition, I think would be great, Christian. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I don't mind. So um, I would like to kind of stay on the board, but I'm just too busy, so I need to control my life. But uh as soon as it gets back into control, I could uh could do things, but right now, two meetings is no problem, so.
Got a business to take care of, Christian?
Yeah, kids, business, you know, too much, too much.
In there, okay.
Oh, I uh, I have to say, I know that Paul McCretsky is gonna be very pleased to know that you're gonna still be there and help out. He talked about it the other day and he said that um he said, well, if Christian's not there, who's gonna be chair? And I said, well, gee, Paul, I nominate you.
Perfect. That was good, Amy.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just work with Carolyn to set up meetings and then just get, be in touch with you.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks, Christian.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Amy. All right. We'll keep moving here. Uh, seven point one had Hadleaf Community, our host community agreement. Uh, this is the final agreement that for their new location uh on Route Nine for the second adult-use marijuana license in Hadley. So anybody have any questions or concerns about this? Christian, you were, y- y- you were on this initial negotiation, right?
Yeah, I was. And I'm trying to think back on my memory. I was gonna look at it real quick, just a couple of things, but uh I mean, I I know that we were comfortable with it all then. Um, I unfortunately did not get a chance to review the latest one here, but um I don't know, whether any changes at all, Carolyn, do you know, or was it pretty much the same one?
Other than the address?
I think it's just the address. I think it's just the address, Jennifer, and Jennifer might know more.
I.
Uh when we had the meeting with them, they said there was gonna be no 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 changes with the address, yeah.
The only thing I see is in the plot plan, are they expanding the backend for more parking? Cause what's showing is parking doesn't look sufficient for the traffic they're hoping to have.
I can ask him that question.
He's actually supposed to be on here, but I don't see him.
Around here right now, I don't know how in hell they're gonna make business there between Amherst and. All kind of centralized things, Queen University Drive and here and over there by uh. Uh Meadow Street on on North Amherst there, it's it's quite concentrated to tell you the truth, but.
Try them all, Joyce.
Huh?
You'll just have to try them all.
I I've never smoked a. I'm a virgin.
I uh I'm not sure if that plot plan is taking in the gravel parking lot into account. I know that when fifty fifty was in that location, they added a gravel parking area. That that's almost double the paved area, so I'm I'm guessing, hoping that's also.
Might have an issue with the land taken also in front, so.
Okay.
Sure that uh if Tommy's on, I see maybe in the planning board can work with them to to get this uh figured out.
Is anybody here from Hadley?
I thought they were going to be here.
He he emailed us back and said that he would be joining us this evening. He might not have been expecting it to be taken up so early.
Okay.
Shame, shame.
Bill, I see your cameras on, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that um we are awaiting the community agreement. That is a prerequisite for filing for site plan approval, so we haven't gotten to them yet. Um my recollection is that's a fairly large lot. It may have some wetlands issues uh to the south, but um whatever might be taken. For Route nine should not affect the viability of the project in any way.
Okay, and since it's still gonna go through the planning board, I think we'll be alright with the parking. Tommy?
Yes, so as far as the uh building, then I gotta go outside of the envelope, the fire department and myself have done a site visit with them. And they're planning on keeping everything in that same envelope for the building.
Cooper.
A motion?
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Christian, any further discussion? Jennifer?
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Changeling.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Weskevitz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Tommy, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
So if they show up later, we can re-talk if they have any questions.
Yes.
I'll keep an eye out for them.
Alright, seven point two COVID nineteen update, Carolyn, do you want to um. Update us on Town Hall and uh what's happening there?
Sure, I can, so the, if you recall, we uh planned a hybrid type of reopening, so. We are now into our, I think maybe our third week of um having a receptionist. And that's Teresa Frost, and she's been delightful to have downstairs in that cold little corridor. Um but we are seeing traffic, so that is nice, it's been very manageable, um I haven't heard any of any issues so far. Um but uh we've also uh switched some offices, so there's more traffic downstairs. I do think that um. Tommy and Dee Dee are enjoying my old office, and um. Once I once I get my desk up here, it'll be really easy, I'm working on eight foot tables here, six foot tables. Um but the staff has been extremely cooperative, it's been a little chaotic, um a few of us are living out of boxes, so. Um that has gone very well.
And just to be clear, the uh temp receptionist is paid for out of uh federal grant funds. We did not break our hiring freeze, we did not hire a permanent employee, this is hundred percent paid for by federal government funds for COVID.
And it's and it's temporary, and her role is to make sure that everyone's um self-certifies that they don't have fever or symptoms of COVID. She directs them to the office that they're looking for and make sure that there's not, you know, two or three people waiting outside of an office as well. And also, um we had to get some extra furniture, that was also Co- uh CARES Act eligible, as well as. Uh we had money set aside from an article in the past to replace the counters, so there are uh. Three counters that are, one new is being added into the building inspector's office and two are being replaced in the clerks and the cl- uh collectors.
So did we only hire one person for the receptionist?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, uh that wasn't the person I saw on my email, so that's okay. I mean, no problem, whoever you hire is fine, but that wasn't the person I had seen, did the other person change their mind?
Um I think there were, something happened, I think there was an issue, and I'm not sure, not with her, I think it was personal, she she wasn't able to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
But the important thing is no impact on your taxes here in Hadley. I've already gotten the emails, so.
David, can you just tell everybody what the um time openings are of Town Hall, so people are aware of that again?
I think it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to noon for right now, right? Okay.
Okay, just so people.
And the Gazette did do a really good, nice article, uh I sent them a press release for the library, the COA, and the Town Hall, so I think that helped a lot.
And we're going to slowly expand this, hopefully if everything works well, right?
I'll keep reporting to you and I'll make recommendations, um and but if you have any input, please share them with me. And I think the way it's set up right now, most of this, I think all of the staff are back, uh. Yeah, all of the staff are back and um I think everybody's comfortable right now, a a lot of the staff have already been vaccinated. So I think there's a comfort level that wasn't there, you know, a month ago.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, sounds good, uh I'm gonna jump down to eight point one Gors, Gors or Gorsch letter. Um Christian, you had worked with the DEI on revising uh the letter. And did you want to say anything about this?
Yeah, we put it together and and sorry, I Amy texted me, I know she was busy at home, so maybe just give her a few minutes to jump on, um. But yeah, I, you know, oops, I guess the, oh, the letter is right there, okay, great, um. Yeah, so you know, just I wanted to address Amy's concern about us uh reaching out to. Employers in the area and that kind of thing, I think the direction I was taking with this letter is that. Them closing has an impact on our community because, you know, teachers in our school rely on this daycare. Business owners rely on the daycare, all different things, it trickles down as well as our residents. And what we're really trying to say is, by you guys closing suddenly, especially um. You know, that has an impact on our community, and what can we do to help with keeping the service going? Because it is important, it is valued by the community, it does build community. And by it closing is a big loss to our community as well as surrounding communities, so. It's more, it's not really saying, don't close, it's more saying, we like what you do. And what can we do to help you stay open is more the approach I was trying to take with the letter. And I don't know if Amy has anything to say, let's see that she's on now, so um.
Yeah, I just agree with what Christian said, that it's reminding the university of um. How, what a quality service it is, which is why people love it so much and so many people use it from the community and why it's at full capacity and enrollment. And also reminding the university that, you know, we should, hopefully would have a symbiotic relationship with universities, not. They take everything from the community and give nothing back. I mean, the community of South Hadley pays taxes and supports the fire department that. Covers Mount Holyoke, so it would be nice if universities would also give back to the communities that welcome them.
So we just need a vote on this letter, so that way it could be signed and sent off to Mount Holyoke.
I I agree with it, I mean, we're not condoning, we're not asking other businesses in town for us to. Support them or or daycare or us being responsible for daycare in Hadley. We're we're a private entity as a as a town, um this is a private college that is offering. A service to um our our people that live here in town and people that live in South Hadley, so. Uh whoever works at the college has the opportunity to use the daycare, I think just in supporting that, there's nothing wrong with it. I don't think that we're actually asking uh anything for us to go any further than that, but that we do support them. Opening their daycare and having it available to um our town residents or the have, whoever works at. Uh Mount Holyoke, so I think I think that's important for us to support that, because it is important for people. Um to get back to work at this time, I mean, we're now into, you know, now over a year, we already celebrated a year in COVID. Um so it's very important to people to feel that they can now go back to work. Now that we're actually giving um injections to teachers and everybody else that's involved. Uh we're trying to uh move this forward up with all of the uh uh COVID vaccines and. You know, this is important, that we need to get back to a normal life and. Um I think I think it's important at this time to support this, so I'll make that motion. That was long-winded, wasn't it?
I can second, I can second.
Alright, motion by Joyce, second by Christian, and I'll just say, yeah, I I think it's time for the college to start. Uh practicing what it preaches as far as um, you know, helping people, helping the community. Uh getting working professionals, men and women that may have kids out there working versus uh, y- you know, they're always. Kind of saying, well, we can't just focus on the bottom line, well, that's exactly what they're doing here, so, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, alright, any other comments on this, John?
I hear what Amy said, I'm sorry.
Jane, go ahead.
I heard what Amy said, and having once been a business owner. I understand how it's hard for someone else to tell someone how to run their business. So I have mixed feelings about the town telling another business what to do. I'm going to support this tonight, but I I have reservations about whether it's appropriate.
John?
Yeah, so that that's what I was gonna say, but uh you know, UMass over the past two or three years. Ha- has actually helped town of Hadley out with uh arrow boards and signage and. Uh this and that, a few little things here and there, and they they really been, the community, the communication's been opened. Up a lot in the last three years with the university and us, you know, because we're the abutting town here, so.
Alright, any other discussion? Jennifer?
We'll call the Phil.
Yes.
Changeling.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Weskevitz.
Yes.
Thank you.
So uh if we could have everyone go in at some point and sign this and, you know, over the weekend, I guess, that would be fine, so we could get it sent off.
David, could I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
You talked last time we discussed this issue about other towns potentially signing on, I know that several other towns have actually. Already expressed interest in signing on to what Hadley is doing, if had, you know, assuming it would would pass. Uh what what are the thoughts of you guys on that? Are you comfortable with other towns? Select boards signing on, or would you prefer that they issue their own separate?
I I mean, I think it's, you know, probably more powerful if it comes as. From multiple people or multiple towns, I should say. So if you need um, you know, now that we've said yes to it, if you want a week or two to check with those other towns, and then we can. I guess add their names to to the letter, or I I don't know, I don't know what's the best way to do it, Carolyn or Jennifer, what do you think?
I think each town should sign, do a letter on their own. Um if they feel that this is appropriate, then they can certainly join in and send. A letter, I think, which is much more forceful than just signing on to what we have. I think it's important for the surrounding towns that would be affected by this. Um service that's offered at Mount Holyoke to to have that uh sent to them, so I. I would approach each town, and if this is what you would like, then, you know, please join us and um send your letter in. Um and support us in doing this.
I think we, I I think it's more powerful to come independently from the towns, but I also think it's. Would have no problem sharing the letter we're sending with the towns if they want a sort of direction to take.
Yes, I agree.
Alright, well then let's do that, let's uh, we'll sign our letter, and then Amy, if you want to, feel free to share it with other towns, and then they can. Sign on if they choose.
Sounds great, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Alright, okay, move on to, see, we have uh seven point three River Bylaw Committee Rule Approval. Tommy, you want to introduce this and explain what we're being asked to do tonight?
Yeah, so we we met uh two, three times, whatever was the um for the river RVs, and. Everything's good, was good, um we came up with a permit, so we can keep the safety issue, you know, on file, anybody there. Um kind of a simple permit, um was gonna be a hundred per camper, it ended up being. You know, they were talking to the the residents and that, they were willing two hundred, it's good for three years. Um the only feedback we're getting now is the uh conservation, um which you'll probably hear now from the people. But as far as the permit itself, um they're good with the building part, the the fire, the um. Or the health on this, so you, the people here now are gonna be, we didn't know what the uh conservation part, which is prior. Was gonna, the expense would be.
Okay, so uh this hundred dollar fee is, is it per camper or per site at this point?
It, the proposal, we were trying to do per site a hundred, and it ended up people, you know, only had one, and they said it wasn't uh. Fair that they would do the, you know, some people have two, we tried to do just families, and and it was gonna be. Legally, can you ask if if it's family members per site, so pretty much the agreement was to do a hundred per camper.
Okay.
Every three years, and you know, it's, so it's thirty three, um ends up thirty three dollars per camper.
Okay.
A year.
And then the question I had is, or I've gotten from residents, is why do we need a permit for campers? Uh that have been down there for, you know, thirty years with no permits at this point? So what's the purpose of the permit process?
It it it's um the the sa- life safety with the whole thing, they, you know, it's it's. By right, they were supposed to, the the, it's this all bases back to the um the new uh bylaw, which actually Mr. Dwyer will be explained better. Um those should have gone through, should have been enforced at that time, they should have gone through ZBA. And you could only have one at that time per lot. So the planning is, you know, board is actually eased up and allowed. Unfortunately, I'll have to be the one to, you know, go through all these permits and all and 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 do it all, but now they can actually have more than one. And if they meet the criteria, the twenty five hundred square feet per camper and twenty five feet, you know, in between. Um and first have to go through a course of conservation.
Okay, so the process here, if I wanted to put a camper on a piece of land by the river, I would go to you for a. File for my permit, and then at at also go to conservation, is that all that's needed, or how does it work?
The first day, the first step is conservation.
Okay.
Is this done by the landowner or by the person who has the trailer as a guest of the landowner?
All by landowner. The letters, when this is, if this is approved and 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 the bylaw, you know, passes, will will go through right all landowners.
So, David, could I put this in context, we're, I think we're chipping away at little pieces of it, but I think you really need the big picture.
Sure.
So prior to nineteen eighty seven, there was no zoning authorization for campers by the river. We adopted the um uh. Over flood overlay district for the first time in nineteen eighty seven, and at that time, we instituted a. We put in a section that would allow campers by the river, but by special permit and one camper per lot. Uh flash forward to now, um the the rules just weren't being enforced. Uh but there is no grandfathering really, because those aren't structures, so they don't really fall under the grandfathering provisions of the zoning. So they don't really fall under the grandfathering provisions of the zoning bylaw. Um, in September of last year, the uh, uh, Department of Conservation and Recreation uh, Flood Hazard Management Program, issued a new draft uh, flood, ha- a floodplain, model floodplain bylaw. Uh, the, every community that has floodplain issues is supposed to have, uh, supposed to adopt a, a version of the new model bylaw, by this um, season, spring twenty twenty-one. So we're underway on that. The RV clause is a small part of the larger bylaw that we have been told we have to adopt, to keep up uh, in conformance with FEMA regulations. The, from a zoning point of view, the, uh, the newest version of the bylaw is substantially less complex than the current version, because we're not requiring a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. We're allowing the special permit to be issued directly by the building inspector, in his capacity as the floodplain manager. And um, we're basically taking the planning board and the ZBA out of the permitting process. So from one end, we are making the permitting process a lot more streamlined. However, in the course of conversation, getting to this point, and looking at a couple of different drafts, we became aware for the first time that, there were other stakeholders along the river, with other jurisdictions, separate and apart from the zoning bylaw, um, that had something to say about what people are doing along the river. And uh, foremost among those is the Conservation Commission between the Wetlands Protection Act and the Rivers Act. They basically have um, two hundred feet of jurisdiction from the mean high watermark inland. And um, basically, as I understand it, and I won't speak for them, but as I understand it, they've had virtually no, contact with any of the folks down along the river. Um, and whether they are there seasonally or full-time, they are under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. That is separate and apart from the zoning bylaw. Um, and there also are concerns, the Board of Health has some concern, has some input, depending on how many units there may be on a particular lot. That's under the state sanitary code. Again, separate and apart from the zoning bylaw. So uh, basically, we're here because the river is popular, has become more popular. And um, as it has become more popular, um, you know, complaints have come into Tom. Um, people are taking a second look at this and, I guess the long answer to your question, David, is the reason people are concerned about what's been going on there for so long is that, it shouldn't have been going on for so long without regulatory oversight. And that has arrived.
Now, um, it's, so we're taking the ZBA out, taking planning out, basically Tommy's gonna issue a permit, based on this, whatever criteria is established here. Um, are they still going to have to pay Board of Health for a permit or an inspection? Because I, I know, the concern people have is the dollar amounts that's adding up. It sounds like everybody on the committee agreed to the hundred dollar per camper fee without any objection, right?
David, do you mind if I cut in here for a minute?
Sure.
All right. So John Michkowski, I was on the bylaw committee. So throughout our meetings, we, we kinda went back and forth on the, the monetary amount of what we're gonna charge for fees. Unfortunately, we had two people from the CONCOM on our committee, who weren't upfront with us on the additional fees that they would be charging. So we were under the impression that it would just be a hundred dollars and maybe a, a small fee from, from CONCOM on this. Um, I've actually received a few emails from people with their applications. Some of these landowners are looking at twenty-five hundred dollars for application fees. That's just an application fee, not granting them a yes or a no. So that's our biggest concern now that unfortunately, this other board was on here and not letting us know, you know, hey, it's gonna be this much to do the filing fees, um, the Endangered Species Act and all this other stuff. It, 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 it was just kind of like a blindsided with this.
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, Joyce, they, i- if you talk, there's a few people on this call right now that will say, that it's gonna cost them up to twenty-five hundred dollars to have campers on the property now because of what CONCOM is now pushing.
Is that a one-time thing for, forever, once the, it's approved or for every three-year period they have to reapply?
Mark, are you on the call? Can you answer that? You're Rob.
I think I can answer that. I believe that once approved, you're approved. But if you change anything after you are approved, the changes have to be reviewed. And depending on how much you propose to change, you may reopen the process.
So here's a perfect example. If the river changes, the bank erodes a little bit, you need to move your camper, there's a change. So you're gonna be charged to do another assessment.
Tommy, you had something?
Yeah. The only thing I was, a lot of, a couple of the feedback I've gotten since, you know, the meeting is that if they're gonna have eight, or they wanna eventually have eight, they're going for all eight, even though they may, as far as our permit, only, you know, do the four. But they're gonna go through the conservation with the eight to cover themselves if the following year they wanna add to. Um, so as, you know, as far as that fee.
Are you talking about years?
No, it would be a three, it's a three-year with our, you know, the actual permitting. Um, but if they go through conservation, they're going through their max at, at any point they're thinking of. So then it would just be the simple fact of adding, cause I guess that's gonna be their biggest hurdle is, is conservation. So then when they apply for it, as long as they meet Board of Health, Fire and all, which, which um, will be streamlined through this permit, you know, they only have to do the four now, whereas they can, you know, have the other four, like, the one example was there was gonna be eight, they're gonna only pay for the four with a permit if the eight are approved through conservation.
Are you talking about number of trailers or number of years?
Number of RVs.
Number of RVs?
Yes.
So, and what is the acreage if you're putting eight campers on somebody's property? I mean, that's a lot of, lot of campers on one property.
We, we have quite a few with, with that or more now. So that's why the, the, the first hurdle would be conservation, giving them permission. And then they'll have to meet the twenty-five hundred square feet per camper and the twenty-five feet spacing between through, you know, our permitting process.
Okay.
Joyce, one of the things that we, we came to the twenty-five hundred feet for was the state regulations. And if you actually go on Google Earth right now, you can kinda see pictures of summertime where there are lots. There's, there's some areas that have ten acres and they have five campers on it.
Yeah, I, I actually, Johnny, I actually drove down there when all of this started. So I did go down and kinda cruise, um, down on the, on the dyke side, on the, on the right-hand side. Um, just to see how many people had what kinda campers and where they were situated and, you know, they, they have pretty much set up, um, a good deal of like, uh, like a compound almost where they have four or five, uh, campers on one lot per se. Um, and that's what I was looking at when I went down there, just to see where they actually were situated. Of course, I didn't have uh, actually knowing where their boundaries were and what, where they were and what they allowed. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with people that own property, that put their own campers down there. I think, you know, we don't, we don't have, I don't have a problem with that. I think the problem is, is when we invite other people in and we have to uh, be aware of, um, and as you do, well, you've been on the committee to know uh, what uh, we are not polluting anything, within the area of DEP and the river and those kinda things. So, I think you all know that. I mean, that's what you've been working on. So, that's my.
Through the permit, you have to show proof that you're being sanitary, that you're having somebody, certified to pump your septic tank or your outhouse. Just as you guys go camping up at Black Bear, I, I, you know, where you go camping, you know how much it costs, you know.
How do you know I'm up there, Johnny?
I stalk you all the time. I'm on Facebook. No, so, so you know that, you.
Yeah.
And it's not as crowded as a campground.
Yes.
And it's family stuff. It's not the problems you have down at Mitch's Island with the campers who don't. Land. These people live here, they own the property. And even if they have guests there, they're respectful. They clean up their trash. They don't burn pallets with nails and stuff in them. Their kids are walking around barefoot, you know, they want it to be a safe area.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things, one of the biggest problems is CONCOM is going through and, and naming all this stuff is structures. A camper is not a structure. If you look under mass laws and the definitions.
Yeah.
A structure is like a flagpole. It's permanent. It's in there. A camper is movable and as you know, you know how much campers cost. If you put a camper by the river, you're watching the, the, the river levels. You're not gonna let it, just yesterday, it crested at one oh nine.
Right.
It's, it, we don't even have campers in and we still follow that on this whole group that, you know, is involved. We know the levels that the river needs to come, you know, come to to get our campers out. We're respectful of that and we're respectful of our own property.
I, I'm not having a problem with what you're doing through the permitting process. I'm having a pros, I'm having a problem right now with CONCOM.
Yeah.
And, and what they're actually uh, requesting people to do because I think it's, I, I think it's really out of whack right now. So that's where I'm coming from. I think it's a little bit unreasonable.
I agree a hundred percent. I think this hundred dollars for three years is very reasonable. It combined the uh, fire department's inspection, Board of Health as well, Tommy, right? Yeah, no, maybe.
Tom?
Yes, it does include Board of Health.
Okay.
If applicable.
Okay. So Board of Health, Fire Department and uh, zoning basically, all under one. So I think that's very reasonable and should streamline that process. Uh, I do have a big issue with twenty-five hundred dollars just to put a camper on your land. As Johnny mentioned, it's not a structure. It's a recreational vehicle. It's movable. Um, I could see if someone wanted to put a structure, then sure, CONCOM can do whatever they have to do. But I, I think at this point, I'd like to uh, set up an appointment with CONCOM to come, talk to us at a future meeting because we, we appoint them uh, to the committee. And uh, there's gotta be some ways that they can streamline this process because hitting them with every possible fee under the sun just because they can, is, is not the way to do business.
Can I, can I speak for a second?
Who was that?
Uh, this is uh, Mark Britten.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
So, one of our biggest problems right now is, um, a bunch of us are all in um, permit. We've all filled out our applications and our notice of intents. We've put advertisements um, that are gonna be published in the newspaper. We've sent letters to the butters. And now we're kinda like, we don't know what we should be sending in for payments um, for these fees. So I'll give you an example, my property. I have four campers on my property, but I'm filing for a, uh, five spots. Um, and the reason being is if I have, you know, my sister that wants to come, if they end up buying a camper or, you know, somebody that wants to come for a weekend or something, I wanna make sure that, you know, um, by the books. So I'm filing for five campers. Right now, five campers filing through the state and the town. It's gonna cost me eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the notice of intent. Um, I'm also at risk of having to file with the National Heritage Endangered Species Program. That's a three hundred dollar fee. Um, other fees, I'm, I'm sending certified mail out to the Hundred Foot of Butters. Um, I'm sending everything to the state and to the town certified mail, which, you know, it's, it's five dollars here and there, but that really adds up. Uh, it, it just, it frustrates me. I was on a lot of the uh, River Bylaw Committee uh, meetings. And it just frustrates me that we had two people from Conservation on there and they didn't disclose, um, what, what fees they were gonna charge. They, they didn't even talk about it. And uh, we all, we all talked about, you know, different, different, you know, charges and I think that hundred dollars per camper, um, for three years is, is, is great. I mean, you can't go camping at a campground for, for uh, thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a night, um, let alone for, for a whole year. So it's just, it's very frustrating and, and we have a lot of money out right now, me and other property owners, um, with news, newspaper publications and whatnot. And now we're kinda like in limbo. We don't know what to do.
Where's, where's your property, Mark?
My property, I'm at the end of Cemetery Road, number ninety-three.
Okay, you're way down at the end.
I am, yes.
Okay.
Any further, you'd be in the river.
Yeah. I, I've been down there. I took a look down there last uh, fall, just to see what was going on. Um, so I did cruise a little bit and see where the campers were and, you know, some areas are very nice. They're upkept, you know, all the campers look great. Um, you know, and I think people have a right to use their property for whichever way they want to use it. Um, you know, concerning the guidelines that we set forward and they're all following DEP, guidelines, especially since we've cleaned up the river and we wanna keep it that way. Um, so let's uh, work, I wanna, like uh, David said, is bring in COMCOM. And uh, let's uh, let's get things straightened out here.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, we may not have any wiggle room on some of the state fees, but a- as far as how these things are being interpreted as structures versus RVs, I mean, I'm sure that would make a difference in the, the amount of fees that are being charged. So maybe we can look at streamlining this process. I'm, I'm sure there's no way to avoid all the fees because it is Massachusetts after all. Um, but, um, you know, let's see what we can do. But as.
Yeah, so, David, I agree. This is Rob Berenowski, if I could just um,
Yeah.
Have a moment. Uh, the problem is really, again, it's because you're filing a notice of intent, it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars per activity. What the commission has decided is each parking of an RV is a separate activity, which is the thing I found the most outrageous. So every camper that you're gonna drive across the lawn and park is a hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that's where it adds up really quick when you have eight campers, times a hundred and sixty-five dollars, when, again, to me, that's one activity. And I've gone through and I've read all the activities and what it means and, they're, they're talking about dredging, filling, building. You're parking a camper on the lawn. And that's where those fees add up. So even when you're talking about the fees, it's the interpretation of the activity that makes it really expensive. One of the, one of the things on this, David, is like you're at a baseball game. And somebody hits a home run, they get a new baseball. Is that a new activity? That's the way CONCOM is like playing this game.
Right. Tommy?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to bring them in. I'm paying three thousand dollars. I'll tell you all upfront. That's what I pay to go to the beach. So I'm happy about that. So I understand, camping is great. It's a family thing and I have no problem with it. And I think if it's your property, we'll try to work with you.
Tommy?
Chief Spake and Able actually just texted me. So this was not about making money. Um, we tried every, you know, like I said, every way to cut. It was all just the, the life safety and, you know, and make all that work. So, we didn't know what that would be for conservation. I just wanna make that clear. And this was, like I said, we tried to do it per lot. It just wouldn't, wouldn't work. It wasn't fair to everybody. Um, so, that was what uh, Mike wanted me to just bring to everybody's attention.
But Tommy, a hundred percent, the, the committee agrees with you and Mike. We, we thought this was the best thing for us as landowners and campers. You guys are doing the exact thing that we should be doing for life safety and for your inspection costs. Unfortunately, there was people on the committee that were not forthcoming with what additional fees would be. It had nothing to do with you guys.
So, if I could get a.
That was my only question was the, the agreement that everybody has together right now, really doesn't affect the board and our decision at this point. It's the conservation that we need to, figure out where they're coming from.
Well, let's rope, let's rope them in and see what's going on.
Yep. Let's uh, a- as far as this fee though, the hundred dollar fee, that's coming from the inspections department. Um, we just need a motion for. Um, we just need a motion for that fee and then we're gonna, we'll set up a time with conservation. Um. Probably at our next meeting, if we can pull it together and maybe get some clarification and uh. Some, a better understanding of structures and and the different activities that they're charging for, which seem a little outrageous.
Alright, so moved.
I make a motion.
Joyce, but do you want to second it, Jane?
Okay.
Alright, motion by Joyce, second by Jane, any further discussion on this? This is the hundred dollar fee only, this is not all the conservation stuff. Nope, okay, Jennifer.
Roll, roll, roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chuggler?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Wes Gavitz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank everybody on that committee too for putting your time in and helping the property owners and the campers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we all appreciate it.
Hello? Yeah, I I wanna um, definitely second to that as well, um, I just wanna, I really appreciate. Um, the planning board, um, Bill, uh, Tommy in the building, um, we've all worked great together. Um, and this has been awesome with them, I mean, we've all learned a lot of things with one another's working together. And then again, you know, this all came down to us this week, which was really disappointing. Um, and I'm glad that you guys, you know, that was our whole, one of our biggest complaints was. They kept saying to us, well, it's kind of like a single family house, no, it's not, it's a, it's an RV, just like you said, it's a reca- recreational vehicle. And it's not a structure and that and and they just, I I, I mean, it even says it, I mean. Um, Rob has read everything and it's true, it's about the dredging and everything, so uh, thank you for um, bringing this up and having that conversation.
Sure, alright, thanks to everybody for showing up and well, we one step closer to getting the process finished, we'll we'll keep working on the rest. Um, alright, so we'll move on, uh, let's do any announcements, we have an executive session tonight, but before we do that, if anybody has any announcements they would like to make.
I do. No, you do.
I do. Tomorrow Carolyn's going to be interviewed by the uh, Hadley Matters, a senior center program, it will be. Uh, a video, it will be streamed live and it will be available on YouTube afterwards, so you can get to know your town manager better. Town administrator, excuse me.
So you're saying it's streamed live, so no second take?
It's like this meeting, they're gonna be recording it, but it's also on the Hadley cable.
So the pressure's on, she's gotta get it ready at the front there.
Hopefully I don't get fired.
So do we, do we start singing, getting to know you, getting to know all about you? That's great, thank you Carolyn for doing that.
Absolutely.
Two o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
David, I do have a couple other announcements, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I I'll, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take a few things out of my town report, because we skipped over that, but I, there's a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. Um, the Easter parade is this Saturday from eleven to two thirty that Parks and Rec is uh, hosting. Uh, Susan wanted me to let you know that excise bills are due tomorrow, April first. And reminded the annual town election is April thirteenth at the new senior center. Um, I also up, uh, Jennifer uploaded uh, some updated. Uh, revenue reports and expense reports for the general fund and the enterprise funds for water and sewer, so I'll try to keep those. So that you can see those on a regular basis. And um, I want to skip some of this stuff, but uh. I just, I do want to tell you that I did meet with Representative Carey, as I mentioned, to talk about uh. Uh, Paul's exotic autos issue, but I also wanted to ask um. Representative Carey, that was my first um, conversation to help see if he could put a line item on the state budget for, to help with the cost of. The sewer lines that need to get replaced during the Route Nine widening project. Um, as you know, it's a perfect time to do this, it will save the town over a million dollars to do that. But there's about eight hundred thousand dollars that isn't covered that the town owns. Um, and I will be meeting with uh. Uh, representatives from Senator Comerford's staff to request funding as well to get that support. Um, I did get a letter of, to see if there was any projects that Hadley needed assistance with from Congressman McGovern's office. So I did reply that we had bid doc ready documents that would be really easy to fund, so we'll see how that comes out. Uh, North Hadley Village Hall, the RFPs are due on the twenty eighth and the invitation for bid was uh, advertised today. Uh, for the fiber optic network, phase two for all the public buildings in town. And um, a huge thank you to Mike Spake Nable and Jennifer who wrestled with the Attorney General's Office uh, several times to get the right information to do this, so. Um, kudos to them. Um, and then finally, we're, I'll be working on the warrant um, and have a draft ready um, in the next week or two. So uh, you'll be getting that in one of your emails too, so just wanted to share that.
Okay.
I had a question about when the last day was someone could put something on the warrant.
Well, you guys haven't closed it yet, so it uh, we we can talk, we're, I have it maybe to close on the seventh. So hopefully we'll have the the draft done, because I still have to have legal review up, but they can re, they can cert, they're gonna review it after it's closed anyways. But we can always reopen it, so I just wanted to reiterate, if we close it in the next meeting, you can always reopen it.
We have opened and closed it for specific things in the past, so.
Yep, it'll be your choice whether to open it or not, once it's closed.
Um, when when you do talk to Joe Comfort and uh, Carey again. If you can find out about that uh, federal infrastructure money, if it is passed. Because that's a five year program that they have that I had sent to you. If if you could see uh, if that's gonna be open to everyone for infrastructure. Or if it's gonna be specific, like we run into problems all the time, you know what I'm talking about?
Right, and there's, there's two uh, funding sources, one federal and one state for infrastructure. And that's why I'm meeting with all three of them to talk with them about it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other announcements?
I would just like to say happy Passover for this weekend and happy Easter to everybody and I hope you have a good weekend.
Uh, and just a reminder, candidate's night for the Hadley Mothers Club is on April fifth.
Thank you.
Oh, yay.
You text me, I didn't see it in time.
Sorry, I I was, I was, but I wasn't gonna let it go since they're gonna end before they, before y'all meet again.
Alright.
Oh, question for you, when are we meeting again? I'm all confused.
Next week.
Yes, next.
April seventh.
Oh wait, I I was one ahead of you.
Yep, April seventh.
April seventh, we're doing three in a row?
Well, it's budget time, let me, I'll clarify, we're gonna clarify that, whether we need the seventh and the fourteenth, but I'll let you know.
Well, we have to do the seventh because Christian has to give his farewell speech on the seventh and we can't jip him out of that, come on.
Absolutely not, so.
Three in a row.
I'll fill it up with other items.
I can prepare it right now, hold on, let me.
Oh, I was, I was looking to know whether or not we should thank Christian tonight for all of his services before. If we weren't meeting on our next meeting, so you know, uh, so I'll I'll save my speech for then, Christian.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah. I had to text, I had to text Jennifer actually and make sure that this wasn't my last meeting, I was like. I don't want to find out halfway through the meeting or at the end, like now, it's your last one.
I am sure we'll have, we'll have information to to add on to that if we meet, it is budget season, I know Amy will have met uh, once before that, so.
Okay, alright, we'll, we'll see you next week.
Town meeting is all set and confirmed for the twenty second, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Alright, alright, so executive session and Jennifer, just to confirm, we're gonna stay on and kick everybody off, right?
Yes, I've, I I think that y'all find that easier, correct?
Yep, it was, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, the select board will enter into executive session per MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty one A two, two. Uh, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town treasurer. So I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Uh, alright, and a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Joyce, second by Christian. And as Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded to enter into executive session and that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. And we will not reconvene in open session, Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Chuggler?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Devin Smith?
Yes.
Wes Gavitz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody, see you on the seventh.
Good night.